Good evening, welcome to Grand Blank Charter Township Board of Trustees Meeting for Tuesday, May 18th. And let's rise and recite the pledge, please.
You're on mute, right?
Good evening, welcome to Grand Blank Charter Township Board of Trustees Meeting for Tuesday, May 18th. And let's rise and recite the pledge, please.
Not sure what's up with that.
Perfect.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'm not sure what is going on with the sound right now. Let me just check something real quick. So I'm not sure what is going on with the sound right now.
Oh, boy.
Echo, echo.
Check something real quick.
It's almost like I've heard that before.
Figure it out before we proceed. Got the echo cancelling speakers on.
Oh, boy.
Echo cancelling microphone. Any suggestions, Nicole? Got the echo cancelling speakers on.
I'm thinking not.
Let me see if I can turn it down a bit here. Any suggestions, Nicole?
Speakers are turned down, so I don't know where to start. 2021, here we are.
About now. Can you still hear it, Nicole, in your end?
I can hear it in here, yeah.
Okay, then we're good. I just turned it down out here.
Let's wait if we hear it there, though.
What's that?
Just waiting for the echo.
No, I turned it down on my computer, so. Okay, that's kind of weird that that showed up all of a sudden.
Would you like me to do the roll calls?
Please.
All right. Trustee Hugo.
Here.
Trustee Fike.
Here.
Trustee Raridan.
Here.
Trustee White.
Here.
Treasurer Kilmer.
Did he step out, I guess?
Kind of here.
He is here.
Okay, myself, present. Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Treasurer Kilmer, are you here? Very good. Seven members present, a quorum.
Thank you, Clerk Robertson. Now I'll ask for an approval of the agenda. Motion by Ms. Hugo, supported by Mr. Raridan.
Motion by Hugo, supported by Raridan, for the agenda. Trustee Raridan.
Yes.
Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Fike.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes, however, I'm going to, during my report, ask for a change in the date of the Planning Commission meeting, so I'll have that under my report, though.
Okay, seven members voting in favor. The motion of adopting the agenda is passed.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will open the floor for public comment. And we have someone in the audience that would like to. We also are online, so what I would ask you to do in preparation is if you're attending the meeting online, what I would ask you to do is to go to the bottom of the screen. And what you can do there is go to the participants icon, click on it. The list of participants will show up on your screen. Down at the bottom of that list of participants will be a hand raise icon. If you click on that, Ms. Roberts here will be able to see that you have your hand raised and we'll call on you. But we'll start here in the township hall first, so come on up, give us your name and address. And we ask everyone, whether you're online or in person, to keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Oh, that's going to be really easy tonight.
Okay.
My name's Alice Grover. I live.
Alice Grover.
Correct. I live at 6405 Prairie Dunes Drive, here in Grand Blank. And I really just have a quick question for Supervisor Bennett. I wonder if he remembers which Grand Blank Park it was that switched from municipal water to irrigating its property with well water instead. Do you remember which park that was?
I don't believe they switched, did they, Mr. Limada? They installed a well to irrigate, from my knowledge, isn't it?
Bicentennial Park, are you referring to?
Right.
The Bicentennial Park, when they, it was before my time, when they were on municipal water, when they powered the.
Splash pad.
Splash pad. That was, they made the change to well water. That was before, well before the February 2016 adoption of the ordinance where you prevented you from disconnecting from public water.
Right, so there probably was a number of, well, the car wash disconnect.
Car wash did it.
But that's commercial.
Right. Well, this would probably be a commercial account as well, but.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, anyone else in the audience? Okay, anybody online, Ms. Roberts?
No. We can't hear anyone.
Okay, so that is causing a problem, then.
I think it's fine.
Are you on Zoom, then?
It's just Zoom that's having a hard time. I can't hear you here. I'm trying to figure out Facebook.
See, let me try to.
Want to stand at ease for a moment?
Maybe they can hear me now. Let's just see if we can echo back. Test it one more time.
That might be good. Yeah.
Okay. I don't hear an echo in here, so that's good. Okay, so I'll try this one more time on the, those that are participating on Zoom, what I would ask is that if you would like to speak, we don't have that many online, so unmute yourself and please let us know your name and address. And we'd be glad to hear your comments if you keep them to, give us your name and address and keep them to less than three minutes, please. Anybody wish to speak?
I hear two people that are trying to speak.
Okay.
They didn't raise their names.
All right.
Monica Shapiro.
Let's ask Monica Shapiro. Go ahead, Monica. Try something here real quick.
President of the Friends of the Grand Blank Grid.
Okay. Now we can hear you, Monica. We couldn't hear you. Go ahead.
You can hear me now? I wrote this very quick. Okay. I am president of the Friends of the Grand Blank Grid. I am president of the Friends of the Grand Blank Grid. The grid project is mentioned in the new master plan. Surveys have thus far shown. You can hear me now? That residents want more non-motorized paths.
Well, we're having some technical difficulties.
The project has been mentioned in the new master plan, which we're very excited by. Our group has supported their efforts, particularly with a non-motorized path.
Yeah, that, I don't know, nothing changed.
It's on your Facebook page. It didn't go to the Facebook page.
It's not on the township?
It's just on yours. But I can hear her.
Hold on just a second.
That'd be because of the Zoom. It's picking up. It's like it's picking up that delay between, maybe it's picking up the delay on Facebook. It's got to be, we are, it's got to be both, I don't know. Or maybe it's Facebook. Because we've had Zoom before and we did it, it wasn't an issue. We've had Facebook in here, too, we've never had an issue.
Bear with me for just a moment, please, everyone.
She hasn't stopped.
And just a second here.
...the school, along every road included in the non-motorized master plan where there are still gaps. The signs will say, imagine a path here, and they'll have our logo and a QR code directing interested people to our website where they will be able to vote for or against the, just the idea of having more paths in Grand Blank Township. It's a way of calling for a referendum and also promoting this great idea that has been part of our township master plan since 1996. We did, we went about it the wrong way, and I am sorry for that. We first spoke to the road commission, since the places we would like to place these signs are technically road commission right-of-way. And they have clear policies about exactly how and where you can place temporary signs. And we are well-versed in all those specifications, so that nothing we would do would be against what the road commission allows in their right-of-way. But they did recently point out to us that the township can override their sign permit policies. Therefore, we come to before you to request that you accept our help in promoting the master plan in this unique and fun way. If we get the kind of numbers we expect, they would be useful in any grant proposals the township might make or funding we could request from any source. Virtually any source you apply for funding for wants to see community commitment as part of their applications. We ask, so we're just asking, we're about to return our $5,000 to the community fund with our tails between our legs, because I think we came across as adversarial. And we only mean this to help the thing that we're all in favor of. So if, I'm asking the whole board to just think about it.
All right, we need to wrap it up, Ms. Shapiro.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yep, we can hear you. We missed the first part, but we get the gist of it, and we'll.
You missed the whole first part?
We will have Mr. Limada address the concern. We've discussed this issue, and, no, we've been listening to you for the last several minutes. It's just that we.
We're just asking that you take, you know, it was June 6th was the day we were going to put them out and pick them up again two weeks later. And so this is the last chance to at least come before the board and let the whole board know what we're trying to do.
Right. Well, unfortunately, unfortunately, it's a township ordinance, and the board cannot override the township ordinance in one meeting. We would have to change the ordinance.
Not in one meeting, not now. But I just want it out there, you have a few days to see if there's something that can be done since. It does fall, the road commission doesn't have a problem with it. And it is only to support every effort we might want to make going forward.
I will, I will ask our attorney and Mr. Limada to discuss it later in the meeting in terms of our sign ordinance and how this would affect that. Thank you, Ms. Shapiro. We appreciate your energy and enthusiasm that we also share.
We're trying to help.
I understand. Thank you very much.
As much as you do.
Yep, I know. Thank you.
Could you ask, does she have written comments she could submit?
Yes, I'll get them to you.
That would be helpful for the minutes, Mr. Shapiro.
Okay, we have a couple of letters we can send you. Okay, we also had Mr. Dean Slosson. Is he still there? Yes. Go ahead and unmute yourself, Mr. Slosson. Good evening.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I missed what you guys presented, because I was on mute, but.
Okay, no.
I was told that there was going to be a meeting about basically code enforcement.
Yes, it is on the agenda.
Please state his address for the.
I know I spoke with you before, Scott, but.
If you can give us your name and address, if you can provide us your name and address, Mr. Slosson, that would be helpful.
Yeah, my name's Dean Slosson, address 2077 Daisy Court.
Daisy Court.
Grand Blank.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Slosson, with your comments.
Okay, well, I just, you know, I had the frustration, I know, with our neighbors that used to continuously put trash in their backyard. I got a shed right behind my, where my fence runs into my backyard, and they always seem to have stuff there. I know, I called the county several times and they came out. But as soon as they cleaned it up, they would always pretty much trash it again. But, I mean, that's, that issue doesn't exist, but I know the frustration, I know if there's a chance to put some type of code in there to make it more, you know, more friendly for the homeowner, where you don't have this issue going, you know.
Okay, we are going to pay some attention to it, and we're going to get a presentation on our code enforcement this evening, so we appreciate your interest and concern with that.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Slosson.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else care to make public comment this evening? Okay, we will close public comment and bring it back here to the board. And if we can make a note just to, I don't know if we want to do it during your report or you want to do it now, Mr. Laddie, in terms of talking, might as well do it now and address the sign issue with, I'm not sure if you're familiar, but they, the Grand Blank Grid had proposed putting snipe, or snipe signs along right-of-ways that basically say that, you know, a path, you know, imagine a pathway here, and it's, you know, it's an admirable, you know, thing. However, if we put those along the road, to my understanding, we would have to allow everybody else to put their signs there as well.
You're exactly right. And unfortunately, and again, I'm glad that they are thinking outside the box as far as information and the like, but one of the challenges that we have in our sign ordinance is that we are limited by really size and location. The courts have become more and more restrictive about information on signs and the content of signs. And so, and so what we do for one, we have to do for all. And we have, we have very carefully tried to define what a temporary sign is and the regulations for a temporary sign and the locations for a temporary sign. And we're, and this is one area where we're really limited as far as making any exceptions. So as good as that idea sounds, it is going to be inconsistent with our current ordinance. And, and again, even when people talk about wayfinding signs and they talk about signs for charities or charitable events, those unfortunately fall under the same regulations as any commercial sign. So, so we're going to have to find a different way, I think, than what was proposed.
Any other comments, Mr. Limada?
No, it really comes down to content. It's one of the things that we've done with code enforcement, and you are going to hear a presentation in just a few minutes. But one of the things that we started to attack five years ago was just the number and the proliferation of those snipe signs on corners. And in fact, the one, I can still remember the day that we really started making a big move on code enforcement. There were 27 of those signs on the corner of McCandlish and Saginaw, because I lived down McCandlish, I turned there and I took a picture, and it was 27 signs on that corner. And that was a pretty typical amount of signs. And you start multiplying that across the township, and it was, I mean, it was a horrific look. And driving through other municipalities where you didn't see that, it's really led us to really trigger that enforcement and really clean those up, because it just really, it makes a difference in your community. And we have two really good code enforcement people who are diligent about getting out there, but even now, they know we don't typically work weekends. And you notice on the weekends, you pull up and you see a million signs, they're gone by 8:00 AM on Monday morning, because they also know our code enforcement's back. So we'll give them the heads up right now, if they're paying attention, they will be working weekends. So, you know, the signs are expensive and they will end up in a dumpster somewhere. I mean, we can't control content. So while we like the idea of what the Grand Blank Grid is proposing, to be able to vision something, we absolutely, the courts are very clear on the fact that we cannot control content. There's no such thing as this is a good sign and this is not, we cannot control content.
So, you know, it's another example of, with an ordinance that have, well, just this one exception. Well, it's a good cause and we'd like to help. It gets the elephant's nose under the tent, and then next thing you know, the elephant's in the tent. So that's why it's important we hold up our ordinances or get rid of them altogether, but.
I don't suggest that.
What's that?
See, I don't like that one.
I don't like that either. But anyways, with that, we will go to our privileged presentation, and the board will hear a privileged presentation from Mr. Michael Berry from PFM, which is our investment firm, and he's going to give us an update on our performance review. Good evening, Mr. Berry. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you fine, thank you.
Okay.
I'm going to.
I'm going to turn up my volume for you a little bit here.
Okay. I'm going to share my screen and ask if you can see the slide that says Charter Township of Grand Blank?
Beautiful, we can.
All right. So it's a pleasure to be here tonight, and just wanted to, I know there's a number of new folks on the board, and I would just want to greet you all and let you know what we've been doing for you and then, and then how that's gone. So we started working with Mr. Guzek and Ms. Shostak in 2018 and 2019, evaluating your investment program, your investment policy, your cash flows. And in 2020, in February of 2020, the account was open and we started managing the funds. I hope that that didn't have worldwide implications for 2020, but I think it's been good for your portfolio. So I just wanted to tell you a little bit about PFM and what our philosophy is and what we're doing, and then I'll get right to that, the performance and the account. So what we, our investment philosophy is really captured by three items, safety, number one, to have a safe investment program for you, which complies with a good, strong investment policy, using high-quality investments, to have liquidity, so that you're invest, you're able to get funds from your account when you need them. So we do a pretty stringent cash flow analysis, and we've done that with you. And then based on safety and liquidity, try to create a portfolio that adds some yield to the portfolio. So you'll see that yield is not first, so we're not doing things and taking on undue risk. Safety is that first part. Just to give you a brief bit on PFM asset management, at one point, PFM stood for Public Financial Management, so about 95% of our clients are public entities. We only manage money for institutional clients. We don't do individual or personal financial management. We're a nation, a national firm. We've got offices in, or 40 different offices around the country. I'm based in our Ann Arbor, Michigan, office. We've been in business for about 40 years, managing these high-quality portfolios, and currently have about $164 billion in assets under management. So we're a large firm with a lot of resources. We do our own research, we do our own analysis, we do our own trading, a very robust firm. One of the things that we like to focus on is one of these bullets near the bottom, successfully navigated the markets during the credit crisis. Initially, you may reference to 2008, 2009, but also the most recent kind of crazy credit markets that we've been through post-pandemic, in that we've never, it says we've completely avoided defaulted credits. We've never bought a security for a client that failed. So that's, again, that safety is our number one concern. You can stop me anytime if you have questions, otherwise I'm just going to push my way through here. You're limited by Michigan Public Act 20 as to what your funds can be invested in. So the Public Act is very strict around what you're allowed to invest in. So one of the things you're allowed to invest in is bank deposits, either demand deposits or time savings accounts. And you could get some FDIC insurance for those. And you're allowed to invest in these other items, US Treasuries, federal agencies, obligations of the state of Michigan, commercial paper, as long as it matures within 270 days and is rated one of the highest classifications. You can invest in certificates of deposit, repurchase agreements, banker's acceptances, in either mutual funds or investment pools, but only if they only invest in these things. So your portfolio cannot be invested in stocks, it cannot be invested in corporate bonds, it can only be invested in very high-quality, short-term, and mainly government securities. One of the things that we worked with Mr. Guzek and Ms. Shostak on in 2018, 2019 was to refine your investment policy. And so there are a couple of things in the investment policy that limits how we can invest. And one I bolded here is that the township shall not direct investing in securities maturing more than three years from the date of purchase. So while the law says that there is no maximum maturity limit on Treasuries or agencies, your policy limits that to three years. What that does, again, is further limit the risk that you can take in the portfolio, as the longer the maturity, the more risk you add in the portfolio. You can use reserve funds or capital improvement funds to, up to five years, if there's like a draw schedule or a project plan, and we can match the maturities to the expected draws in the funds. And then the other thing that's been put in there to protect for risk is we've done some cash flow studies, and a target of 15% of the portfolio should be continuously invested in readily available funds, such as money market funds, to ensure appropriate liquidity is maintained to meet ongoing obligations. So again, that safety was number one, liquidity is number two. So there's always funds available to take every day without having to sell something out of the portfolio. As I mentioned, we did do a cash flow study, and these are actually your numbers from 2018 and 2019. And as we would expect, there's a cyclicality in the inflows and outflows based on your tax receipts. So we did this and found that the low point is in December, the high point is in February, and the average for those two years was about $27 million. So what we did with that is, based on your investment policy saying that there needed to be 15%, always liquid, we built in kind of a liquidity cushion, and we're using two different styles to manage the portfolio, so there will always be this liquidity cushion. I also wanted just, to just share what the treasury yield curve looks like today, to see what's actually available to invest in. And if you remember, your investment policy restricts you to investing no longer than three years. So if you look at this, this graph, that three-year maximum maturity is still under probably 4/10 of 1%. And we can see at the end of last year, this dotted line, interest rates were even lower. They bumped up where this light blue line is, and now they've come down a little bit. But the, a lot of the money is very, very short-term. Again, we have to keep, by your policy, 15% of the portfolio maturing daily. And this, currently, the three-month US Treasury bill, this, April 26th was yielding two basis points, or two 1/100 of 1%, almost zero, is currently yielding 1/100 of 1% and has, over the last few weeks, yielded zero. So it's a very, very low interest rate environment, much different than what it was just a couple of years ago. But the interest rates have started to move up, but the Federal Reserve really controls the short end of the yield curve, and they're indicating that they're going to keep interest rates this low on the short end, probably this year and perhaps next year as well.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
I have a question. Scott Bennett?
Yes.
So our investment policy says three years or less?
Yes.
I guess that makes it less risky. It also allows us to have more access, I imagine, in the event that we need to have access to the capital.
Right.
A little bit easier. So if we're planning a major project, we're able to dip into that, what was it, 25 million or whatever, 20 million?
Right.
We're able to dip into it a little bit easier if we, you know, know that in four years, we're going to have a project or whatever. But any thoughts, Mr. Limada? I haven't talked to Ms. Shostak about the policy, but is that something that we want to continue with, you think, that three years or?
So I think it's very important, and Mr. Berry certainly will make himself available, but I think it's very important that that investment committee that you appointed folks to last week, we get that initial meeting scheduled, certainly, you know, do get Mr. Berry in, either in person or in virtual, and review the policy. I think it's something that the investment committee should look at every year, just to make sure that the policy still meets our needs. Most of the time would be a quick review, but if we determine that based on our needs, you know, from a long-term capital, a bit longer investment period was warranted, that's something that the investment committee can review, discuss with Mr. Berry, and the wisdom of it, and then present to the full board.
Okay.
Okay. So just wanted to show you, this is how your portfolio was invested before you hired us. It was mainly in about 60% certificates of deposit and about 40% in money markets that invest only in accordance with the Public Act 20. And this is really, is a non-professional investment advisor, or without a professional investment advisor, really what you, all you had access to. And then you can also see that. And then you can also see that the maturity distribution, most of your money, 96% of your money matured in three months or less. So we've made changes with that and we've moved out the yield curve some. But if, if you were to have maintained that today, your return would be somewhere in the two one-hundredths or one one-hundredth of 1%. So extending out as you have out to three years has benefited the portfolio. And I know this is probably really hard to see, but I just wanted to show a couple of, of things in that instead of being 60% CDs and 40% bank accounts, the account is now 56% US Treasuries, 26% money market fund or pool, and 18% in federal agencies. So the, using these Treasuries and agencies to move out the yield curve to pick up additional yield. And then at the bottom, we're seeing that about 43% matures in zero to one year instead of 96% in less than three months. And then 33% one to two years and 24% two to three years. So we've moved out that yield curve. So we're taking advantage of the change in the investment policy. And then finally, so we've managed, this is as of the end of March 31st, the portfolio has returned 0.46. We use a benchmark to compare. If you were just using the one to three or two year, one to three-year US Treasury index, that one-year return was .24. So we've, not only have we increased the real return in the portfolio from what it would have been at about five one-hundredths of 1% to about a half of a percent, but we also outperformed the benchmark. So it wasn't just the market that moved. It was also our, our investing that, that did that for you. One thing I will point out, and these are quarter ends and how did we do at the end of each quarter? I mentioned that interest rates have gone up and there is an inverse relationship between interest rates and market values. So when interest rates go up that are higher than what you, you got when we bought the securities, the value goes down. And when interest rates go down, the value goes up. So we have seen, as I showed on that yield curve, interest rates going up. So at the end of three quarter, or the first quarter, for that quarterly return, there was a small market value loss. Now that's unrealized. It only becomes realized if we sell something, but still better than what the benchmark did. So there, it was pretty flat for the first quarter at negative one, one hundredth of 1% versus a benchmark at negative five one-hundredths of 1%. But that will only be realized if we actually sell those securities, which we haven't done. So over the year, we've been able to provide a, 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 a pretty good return. It's hard to be really excited about earning a half a percent when two years ago you were probably earning one and a half or 2%, but given where the market is right now, that's a, a fairly good return and in a fairly conservative portfolio. So that was the, the totality of what I was going to present today. And would be happy to entertain any other questions. I have met with Mr. Kilmer and Ms. Stilson to talk about this and would be happy to meet with a new investment committee and reexamine the current cash flows and reexamine the investment policy. The investment policy should be a living, breathing document that, that can change with the, the trustees and the townships' feelings about their investments. So it doesn't, but once it's there, that's what we follow. So it shouldn't have to be something that can't ever change.
Okay. Yes, we have a question here. Mr. Berry from Trustee Reardon.
So prior to you taking over, it earned .04%, is that correct?
I'm saying, so prior to us taking over, the interest rate environment was much different and it was probably earning about one and a half percent because that's what was available in the market. If it had stayed that way, all that's available on that 30, 90 days or left or 30 days or less right now is about one or two one-hundredths of 1%. So it earned more prior because the market, the interest rates were higher then. So that's why I wanted, just wanted to show that, that current yield curve. Now, he was, he was doing a good job with, with the limitations that he had. And so when you hired us, you freed up some limitations and we have more resources to tap into securities outside of bank deposits and CDs. So we're able to add more return to the portfolio. And as interest rates rise, we would anticipate that we would again be able to outperform anything that was the 90-day or less or CDs and, and bank deposits.
Okay, thank you.
So it's earning significantly more than if we're invested as if we hadn't made the change?
Right, that's correct.
I've got a question.
Yes, Mr. Feike.
Yes, sir. You are very knowledgeable and you do this all over the country and we appreciate that. But I think for the average investor who's looking at the stock market and saying, wow, it's at record highs, are you basically saying that municipalities really can't get in on all that because we've got to be so darn conservative?
Yes, there's actually a law in Michigan, Michigan Public Act 20 that, that defines what you're allowed to invest in, that municipalities are allowed to invest in. And that I showed in the beginning, you're only, you, you are specifically prohibited from investing in the stock market or even corporate bonds. You can only buy sure, or government securities, commercial paper, so very short-term investment vehicles. But you are prohibited from participating in the stock market or the bond market because they're very volatile. You know, last year, the stock market was down, at one point was down 35%. And that's not .0035, that's three, that'd be 3,500 basis points. It was down 35%. So the, the state doesn't want you to have that volatility in your monies that have been entrusted to you by your taxpayers. So this, the, the state has limited you very strictly as to what you can invest in.
One more question, Michael. Is there any way to compare us to other jurisdictions that you represent? Or is this about the going rate across the country and all those other places that you represent?
Yeah, so I can, I could pull up or create like a Michigan composite. I can show you what our, I don't have it with me right at the moment. I can show you what our, our typical account with a, with a one-to-three-year limitation is. I did show a benchmark of the, of an index of one to three years and that was, I think, 20, .022 and you're .46. So you're about 22, 24 basis points or one hundredths of a percent above the index. I can also show you what other Michigan or what other clients are composite of our clients in that realm are. Every state has, has different laws. I don't believe there's any state that allows a municipality to invest in stocks, but some states allow municipalities to invest in corporate bonds, which are riskier than government securities. So over time, you get paid for that risk with a higher return. But currently, Michigan does not allow that for municipalities.
So I know at one time, Mr. Berry, I think one of the last meetings that you were here for, the question was similar to Mr. Feikes was how many other townships, you know, have this kind of performance? And I think you told us at the time that there's not a whole lot of townships that have the money to invest that we are right now.
Right. That is correct. But we do work with many municipalities in Michigan. And, and then for our firm, we have a composite return of everyone that we're investing in a one-to-three-year treasury style like we are for you. What was the average return for that? And you are in that realm. And this is, I can't pull that up right this second, but for the investment committee and for the future, I can have that information as well.
Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Berry?
I, I just have more of a comment. I, I would appreciate maybe bringing some data on three to four years versus one to three. Do you have that? Not right now. This is more for...
Yes, yes. So what we have is a one-to-three, a one-to-five, a one-to-10. So if we wanted to see, and again, our composite returns and a benchmark return. So I can show you, this is what our typical one-to-three-year portfolios return. This is what our one-to-five-year return. It should theoretically, over time, be a greater return because you can invest out on that rising yield curve in the one-to-10 year. So I can bring, I have that capability. I don't have it with me right at the moment, but I can certainly again, as I say, present that and show that to the investment committee and bring it back to the trustees the next time I present.
Yeah, that, that would be great. Just the, the risk benefit analysis ongoing, that would be perfect.
Great.
Very good suggestion, Mr. Reardon. And Mr. Berry, we can always as a committee or, and bring it to the board, perhaps say a certain percentage we would like to keep and within a certain number of years and
Right.
allow a certain percentage, say 25% could go out to five years or what have you.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Berry? Okay, we look forward to having you at our investment committee meeting here. We'll get that scheduled in the next few days and look forward to having you here with our, our board members.
Great. It was, it was nice to see you all tonight and I hope you have a good rest, a good meeting and rest of the evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to next item on the agenda is our approval of the consent agenda. I'll ask for a motion to approve Mr. Reardon, Trustee Reardon, supported by Trustee Feike.
Record roll call. Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Reardon?
Yes.
Trustee Feike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item under new business, item A, the board will hear a presentation regarding code enforcement. We have with us Jeremy Smith, our Planning and Zoning Director and our Director of DPW, Jeff Sears. Good evening.
Good evening. I believe this is going to bring up our PowerPoint presentation. Hopefully tonight, Jeremy and I can tag-team this task a little bit with you folks. As you know, Jeremy joined us not that long ago. He's a code enforcement aficionado. So he'll be able to help answer some of your more technical questions along with Chief Wiles and obviously Attorney Laddie. Ordnance Enforcement falls under the purview of the Department of Public Services, which was created this year with the combination of Public Works and the Building Department. The two code enforcement officers we currently have are Amy Wilkinson, who's our full-time, one full-time employee. She's also the office clerk that does a lot of the clerical tasks that we have. And then Steve Hadfield, who's our part-time code enforcement officer. He's a retired police officer out of the city of Grand Blanc. As I said, it's part of the Public Services Department. Code enforcement is responsible for enforcing general ordinances, which covers stuff like junk and debris, vehicles, weeds, and zoning issues such as signs, illegal structures, and other things that fall under the zoning ordinance book, which is where Jeremy's expertise comes in. Our code enforcement office or services are typically Monday through Friday, but we do have one officer or possibly two that occasionally works Saturdays, patrolling the township mostly to remove signs. Because we all see on Saturday's and Sundays, everybody likes to bring and stick their signs out in the right-ofways for, you know, open houses and sales and stuff like that. So addressing that proactively is, is important to the township because we want to make sure people know we're not going to tolerate that kind of infraction. Their, Amy and Steve's contact information is right up there. They can be reached at their own desks by email or just by calling the general township phone number. In 2017, we only had one part-time code enforcement officer. We made the decision at that time to increase it to one full-time and one part-time code enforcement officer, which I believe has been very effective thus far and it has stepped up our, our efforts a great deal. The township's adopted a policy that we investigate every single complaint that comes in. We ask that every complaint is written on a form or via email so that we can track them. We can have contact information if the complaint wants to be contacted back. A lot of times they don't want to leave their information. They want to be anonymous, which is fine also. Residents can make complaints by using the online public service request system, which we, is available on our website. Basically, you type in your information and it just sends that right to our IT department who dispatches it out to the appropriate staff person. They can download the form on our website or pick one up here in Township Hall, which is opening up on Monday, and drop it off or email it to the township. They can also call our offices and speak directly to a code enforcement officer for help. Like I said, every complaint is investigated, no matter what resources we have to put into it. We will look into every single one of them. We, we try and investigate every complaint and resolve it through cooperation with the resident. We don't want to write tickets. We don't want people to have to go to court. We just, we just want them to know what they're doing wrong or what the infraction is and help them achieve the best result for everybody, for the whole community. There are more times than not, in my experience with code enforcement, which I did many, many, many years ago, that people just don't know that they're doing anything wrong. A lot of times it's blatant. They do know when they're doing something wrong. But many people just have no idea. They have no idea that their RV can't be parked in front of their house. You know, this year we had a huge RV boom and people don't know that it doesn't fit on their lot. And then they're, they end up having to buy storage and stuff like that. Unfortunately, we have to do that reactively because many people don't call us and ask us. But hopefully, we can resolve everything without having to write tickets. Once we receive a complaint, the, we'll send the homeowner a letter and they'll have 10 days to respond and come up with a resolution. We're, once again, we're flexible with that. We understand sometimes people may have a hardship. If they have an RV, they just bought one. It may take them more than 10 days to find somewhere to take it. We're, we're going to work with people as much as we possibly can. If the property owner doesn't take care of the violation, then we have the, the option to write them a citation, in which case they'll be given a, a date to appear in court and a judge will decide what the appropriate remedy is. Grass and weeds is by far one of our biggest complaints that we get, one of our biggest enforcement activities. We go out and we enforce it. Once a yard is over eight inches, yes, Amy and Steve do have measuring sticks that they will go out and walk in the yard and measure the grass length. They'll take pictures of it. We'll then follow that up with a letter to the homeowner. We'll give them, again, 10 days to resolve that. If they don't, we're very proactive on calling our contractor, which is Ace Outdoor Services, to mow the yard. They're very quick. They usually have it done within 24 to 48 hours of receiving that request. I think last year alone, we had over 122 cases that we went and mowed grass. And we've already got a handful that we've already sent to Ace this year so far. We charge property owners $165 per mowing, which covers the cost of Ace and our administrative costs for having to do that enforcement. If the fees aren't paid, then we can put those on property taxes so that we will get payment for them. These are some of our statistics. Unfortunately, we, we weren't able to break them out 2020 to 2021 because our BSNA software wasn't cooperating with us last week. But you can see, again, majority are grass and weeds. The 122 is from last year. This year's has, have not been entered in to the system yet. Inoperable vehicles is another big one. People don't realize that your junk vehicle can't sit in your driveway for months and months. You know, eventually somebody is going to call us and say, or we're going to notice it. Junk and debris is another one. Toys piled up on front porches in yards, landscaping materials, brush, all kinds of stuff that we see. Boat and RV parking is another big one. Signs, signs violations mostly are, are the snipe signs, but we do catch banners. You know, if you're going to put up a banner for a business starting up or something, you have to have a permit for that. So we educate people. We let them know that they have to have a permit for it. A lot of times... of times they'll come and pull a permit, and then we'll allow it. Sometimes we just have to make them remove their banner, a lot of times they'll exceed the permit window, so we'll have to, you know, ask them to remove that. Uninhabitable structures, our code enforcement officer will go out and tag those, so that we can follow up and get the structure either fixed or tore down. So far in 2020, 2021, only 14 cases required settlement in the court system, which I think speaks pretty highly of our code enforcement officers. Again, we want to avoid that as much as possible. We do have repeat offenders who will fix something, and then we have to go back and tell them again and again that they have to fix it again, but they always seem to come in compliance. But we do pretty good about avoiding the courts. The biggest question that we get is how reactive and proactive are we? Well, unfortunately, our code enforcement officers are primarily reactive right now. They do proactively patrol for signs, like we said before. They do work Saturdays, they do work Sundays sometimes, to make sure that we remove those, so that people know they can't get away with it. We have a, a certain vision for our township, and we want to keep it that way. When they are out and about, and they see something obvious, they will record it, and they will follow up with it. You know, if they're at Mr. Robertson's house, because his camper's parked out in his front yard, and they see the neighbor has a pile of brush that's obviously been sitting there for a very long time, they'll follow up with that, absolutely. So why are we not more proactive? The biggest reason is our staffing level. Our code enforcement officers do all of their own clerical work. So they go out in the field, and they patrol, and they respond to complaints, and then they send all their own letters, they answer all their own follow-ups, or emails, voicemails, they schedule their follow-up inspections, they do all of that on their own, so they have to split time between the office and the field right now. We will look at other ways that we can be more efficient in that, but unfortunately, that's our reality right now. And like I said, they do work weekends occasionally. The Police Department also has a hand in ordinance enforcement. They get calls over at dispatch, and some of the things that, they get calls about, illegally parked boats and RVs, which is a big one we get here in the township, excessive junk and debris, unlicensed vehicles, that happens quite a bit, noise complaints. In 2020, they received 51 code enforcement calls, and 12 so far in 2021. Jeremy's here to answer any questions, along with myself, and I'm sure if you have any for Chief Wiles, he'd be more than willing to do so. Yes, sir.
Mr. Kilmer?
My understanding, I have no idea if this is accurate or not, but the difference with a vehicle is whether or not it has an active license plate on it.
I believe that is the majority of it. I, I think if, if it's very apparent that it's dilapidated, if it's very apparent that all four tires have been flat for a year, then it's obviously inoperable, and we can, we can cite them for that.
Chief, what's your?
Is that accurate?
Good evening. As far as vehicles go out, two rules of thumb, has to be registered, but it has to be operable as well. So like Director Sears said, if it has flat tires, or missing a wheel, or the engine's clearly out of the, out of the front of it, it's clearly inoperable, that would be violation as well. And a vehicle has to be parked on an approved surface, it can't be in your front yard, can't be on your grass, it has to be on a driveway, or pavement, or loose stone-type surface, can't just, you know, pull it up in front of your house and call it good.
That's one I see quite a bit, is vehicles parked on the front lawn. Couple of questions, one is, so Jeremy, I know we, we talked the other day, we had a workshop, and we talked a little bit about the difference between proactive and reactive. I know you came from Davison Township, and they had a proactive, or actually, we respond to complaints, and I think we've, we've done a great job of that, and prior to that, I don't know that we, we didn't have anybody on staff necessarily, we just sent the police out, is that correct, Mr. Limina, as far as how we did it before we had Amy on, or?
Yeah, we, we basically had a, we've always had a part-time code enforcement officer, typically a retired police officer, who worked out of our building department as code enforcement. In 2017 is the first time we changed that, and as we decided to be a little bit more aggressive, and especially like the snipe signs, the obvious signs, flags, banners, that kind of stuff.
So you were in charge of code enforcement in Davison, and I don't know, how does it compare? I, I think you mentioned that you had quite a few more, I think Mr. Laddie also is very familiar with Davison Township and their code enforcement, but you can speak to some of the differences that, and I know, you know, one of the things, if we wanted to be more proactive, it's going to cost us some money.
Correct.
But, you know, Mr. Limina will find the money if we need to.
Staffing is going to be the big concern. We had a full-time officer in the field, he was out more than he was in, and then we had a clerical that did all of the paperwork. So that was a, it was easier for them to be outside more than they were in, because they didn't have to do all their own clerical information. Obviously, they would answer phone calls and things of that sort, but they were out more than they were in.
I wonder, you know, if they couldn't use tablets, so they, they basically can send, you know, so somebody in the office would send the letters, or something like that, but, you know, they wouldn't?
So I have my ways that we can, can improve, that we can streamline it, yes, for sure.
Okay, all right. Funding for code enforcement.
There's no money.
The, so code enforcement is in the building department, right?
It is.
So do building fees and permit fees and whatever, can those be used for code enforcement, or no?
Well, yes, they can. What I'll say about the building department is, again, treat the building department, and it's just like we did in the budget, it's set up much like it's an enterprise fund, because when any fees that we are charging has to be a cost recovery thing, when we're looking at the building department, we treat it just no different than the water, sewer systems. It's not a profit center, we can't make money on it. So whatever the fees we charge, we have to be able to support by looking at the amount of staff time that's required to actually process those complaints, and then the, the fees have to, you know, to match, so yeah, we, we can do that, but add it, you know, being in the, in the building department, that is factored in, that we really look at the fees that we charge, and make sure that we're doing a true cost recovery.
Right, but I'm just thinking in terms of, so, let's say, what the, I don't know what the fine is for me not mowing my grass, actually, my wife does a beautiful job of that, but happens to be in the audience tonight, so.
Thank you, Sharon.
But in terms of if I don't mow my grass, I don't know, is there a, I get fined, is it just the cost of the mowing, or is it above and beyond that, for example?
It's the cost of the mowing, plus the, all the employees' time into it as well. And in my opinion, your fee is very low, it should be quite a bit higher, but unfortunately, you have to justify that cost. So you can raise it somewhat, but you're not going to be able to charge $1,000 to not be in the mowing business.
We charge $165 per mowing, what did you charge in Davison Township?
$333.
Wow, you probably don't have repeat offenders.
Not very many.
The, the only, what I'm getting at is that, I'm just wondering if, you know, I know it costs money to do code enforcement, but if we're getting paid by the people that are violating, then that's, that's where it gets paid from.
Right, and a lot of public relations can curb a lot of this as well, so if you put things in the paper, or let them know that the code enforcement book is on your website, things of that sort, you can curb a lot of, well, I didn't know.
Right, and I, I tend to believe what Mr. Sears was saying is that a good majority of people don't have any idea that there are any standards, that if I want to just make a brush pile in my front yard, and leave it there for a couple of years, nobody's said anything to me, so I'm going to leave it there for a couple more. But if we publicize what those standards are, at least some of them, and then start showing, you know, a visit to them, but I know with our strategic planning meeting that we had on Monday, or with department heads, we, we talked a bit about, and I think the board wanted to explore being a little bit more proactive on it, and I know Mr. Limina is trying to keep our, our budget in the black, so finding creative ways to fund more code enforcement. I know, I know that when I was knocking doors for my campaign, it was a top priority for a lot of people, it was code enforcement, and so, we've got a few other comments, but I'll open it up, Mr. Reardon?
I don't know, probably Jeff. How long does it take, if somebody were to make a complaint today, how long does it take for people to respond? Because I've heard people complain about the length of time.
We should respond, be responding to every inquiry you get within 24 hours. Obviously, if it's a Friday night or something, it's going to be a little bit different, but I mean, that's just a rule of thumb for our township, is we try and, you know, respond quickly to everything. Certainly, if, if that's not happening, we should know those cases, so we can follow up and fix that. I would hope it's 20, 24 hours, though. Obviously, there's vacations and stuff, but that shouldn't be that big of a factor.
Things call, fall through the cracks.
Sure, it happens, absolutely. Yep.
I just would like to make, make sure that we do with that.
100%.
Expeditiously.
Right.
What was the rule of thumb in Davison, Mr. Smith?
24 hours.
Was it?
Just know that there's a 10-day window.
After you notify.
So it's, even if we send out the notice that day that we get the complaint, you may not see improvement for seven to 10 days.
I'm going to ask you to come up to the mic.
But if somebody, if somebody calls and makes a complaint, we should respond back to that person, if they want to respond, very quickly.
So after the 10 days, or, or, let's say you go out there, how, the 10th day, do you go there on the 10th day exactly? I mean, let's assume it's a Wednesday or a Thursday. I guess what I'm asking is the follow-up, is the follow-up real timely?
It is, it's very prompt, very tight, yes.
And the mowing services, they're the very next day?
They're generally.
To get paid, right?
They're generally the next day. Sometimes it takes 48 hours, but they're generally have crews the next day.
Mr. Hugo?
Oh, I was just going to say that years ago, I may or may not have had some complaints in my neighborhood, either from myself or my neighbors, and they were answered in a timely manner, within 24 hours, and again, within the 10 days to have the lawn mowed, so.
Dear.
Yeah, we've been, we've been happy with that.
Mr. Robertson?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Our, we're, we're complaint-oriented now, reactive, as you say, is there a particular area of our codes that you think is not being cert, well-served by the, the complaint, or, you know, nature of it? Where, where, if there was one area you would point to where you have a concern as regulators, what would it be?
I, I think primarily for me, it would probably be junk and debris. I, I think that if we were out in the community, patrolling more of the subdivisions and everything, we could catch more of that. I think that's probably what bothers people the most. And, you know, generally, if somebody's yard is, you know, a foot long, we're going to get a call before anybody ever, you know, calls us.
Part of the problem with the junk and debris is it tends to start out with, well, it's just a grill sitting in the driveway.
Right.
Then it's the garbage cans in the grill, then it's a pile of paver stones, then it's a pile of sand along with it, and it would be okay if the project was like, hey, we see that they're going to be done with the project in a month, but when it's out there for a year, then there's a roll of fencing, and then there's a pile of brush, and it's just like, over a period of time, the residents start, well, I never complained about that, and everybody else, I guess, is okay in our neighborhood with that. And so now I'm kind of the odd person out if I complain, because it's been there for, you know, but it's been growing.
Sure.
And part of, I know, maybe David, Mr. Laddie can speak to two things, one, we changed how we cite these people, it's a civil infraction, maybe for the board, you can kind of lay out what that means, but the other thing is for repeat offenders, because there are some people I'm aware of that our code enforcement, I don't know if they just go there regularly, they should, because a couple of the people that I've turned in are, you know, they're, somebody you probably have to visit once a month and tell them to clean it up. And I've got people telling me that, you know, hey Scott, how come nothing's happening over there? It's like, it's a continual battle, you know, and we've been in court with some of these people, and whatever, so, I don't know, maybe David, you can expound a little bit about.
I can, and in things that, believe it or not, things are better than they used to be, that, I want to say, probably in the last maybe 10 or 12 years, the state of Michigan created an option for municipalities to create a municipal civil infraction, and there are a couple of ways to, to administer that, and, and what we're doing in, in Grand Lake Township is we're, we're taking our codes, we've identified certain, certain violations that used to be, they used to be all criminal, and so you could get somebody that, that had junk and debris in the yard, and if they didn't, didn't abide by the, by timelines, or by an order of the court, they could theoretically go to jail for 90 days. While, while that may be appropriate in some cases, it wasn't appropriate in most, and, and so what the municipal civil infraction process did was, it decriminalized violations, which means that, for better or for worse, you're now, you're now having a hearing in front of a judge, instead of the right to a jury trial. If, if these things were still misdemeanors, we wouldn't be able to enforce them, because you can't get a jury trial these days, because of COVID, and I don't know when that'll start, when they do start up again, they're not going to, municipal, or code violations aren't going to be at the top of the list, right? So, so the good news is that, that the process is quicker, the good news particularly in that regard is it's a lot cheaper. I used to have to go to circuit court and get these things enforced, and a circuit court case can take eight months, nine months, a year, and they're more costly. So we, we've, we've cut the, we've cut the cost down, we've cut the time down, we have eliminated a jury, which leaves us with, the fact finder will be the judge, and, and for the most part, we get, we get good responses in that area. But remember, these are people that, that see drunk drivings, they see drug cases, they see, you know, people drive, die from overdoses, they see domestic violence, and, and when you show them a pile of brush, they're, that's, that's a mental break for them, I mean, they're kind of like, whoa, why, you know, what's going on here? It's important, though, for the community, and it's important to keep reminding the fact finders that, that this stuff has an impact on values, it has an impact on morale, and we've got to keep it up. And, and the other thing, to, to move on through the civil infraction process, is we, you don't have to be a police officer to issue a ticket, so we can, we can, in effect, I don't want to say deputize, we can identify a lot of different people that can give out municipal civil infraction tickets. In fact, when this, when we first implemented this, we had a number of, we created a box of tickets that looked like police tickets, and we could hand them out to anybody that we identified in the statute, and so that made enforcement easier. And the other thing is, once we get there, once there's a finding of responsibility, we have a scaled penalty, so usually with your first violation, if you come in and you've resolved your case before we, before we have to talk to you and, and get in court, then, then nine times out of 10, we will, we'll thank you, and we'll drop the case, and it won't cost you any money. If we have to engage in, in court action in time, then we usually ask for a fine of $500, and, and that is just like if you got a speeding ticket, and there was a fine associated with that, you owe that money in combination to the court and to the township, and the court helps collect it. So, so the good news is the court helps collect it, the bad news is they take cut of it, in fact, they take 50% of it. The other, there are options also, and this is, this is important in, in particular cases. Tomorrow morning, coincidentally, I have a case where we have a property that we're not sure if it's abandoned or not, it's got all kinds of different problems, it's got junk and debris, it's got vehicles, it's got, we think there's been, there's, the basement's got half-full of water, Mr. Hadfield said that he's, he's, the doors are open and closed at odd times, he's not sure if people are in there, he's not sure if animals are in there, and so we're going, we're going for more, much more than a fine, we're going for an order that requires the owner to secure that property for ingress and egress, and board it up, frankly, and then to either come in and pull building permits, or pull a demolition permit to have it knocked down. And the good thing about municipal civil infraction is it gives the judge this equity jurisdiction to do that. He can order all kinds of, of things to be done by a property owner that he ordinarily wouldn't have the authority to do. If you're, if you're guilty of a crime, you go to jail and/or you pay a fine, judge can't tell you not to do it again. In a municipal civil infraction, he can say, if you do this again, I'm going to hold you in contempt, and also, I'm going to take the costs, and I'm going to let Grand Lake Township hire contractors, go in and board the place up, clean up the junk and debris, and they're going to put it on your tax roll. going to put it on your tax roll. And you're going to pay it when next time taxes come around. So what I did today was I prepared an order for the judge to issue a fine. This is all going to happen, this is my wish list, right? There'll be a fine of $500, there'll be a deadline for the cleanup of the junk and debris, there'll be a deadline for the boarding up of the house and the securing of the house, there'll be a deadline for pulling either a building permit or a demolition permit. And if they don't meet the deadlines, then we have the ability to have all that work done and put it on the tax roll. The second thing I do when I write that order is I have to go in the township records and make sure that that property is not moving its way down tax forfeiture. Because we've had this happen occasionally where we get, we go in and clean up property to the tune of $5,000 to $10,000. And then low and behold, the property is lost to taxes. And then, and you know in that process, anything that's not just pure taxes gets wiped off the tax roll. So we get shorted on that. Good news is, the case up tomorrow, the taxes are paid. The bad news is, though, we're not, we're trying to figure out why the owner is absent and if we've really, if we've identified the owner in our records. I think we have. The other thing that we do, in addition to sending out notices by mail, is Hatfield went out and literally tacked a ticket to the door. So we get to tell the court that we made service because we posted it on the door. So these things are, they look simple, they involve a lot of paperwork. And I was thinking about when Jeremy talked about, they have somebody in the field almost all the time in Davison, because their administrative, their paperwork is done in-house. And I'm not sure if it's one person or two, if it's spread out. But I would say for every violation, you're going to create four or five pieces of paper. You're going to need to research who owns the property, you're going to have to mail notices out, you're going to have to calendar that, and you're going to have to follow up. So, and by the time it gets to me, it's, the file is full of pictures, it's full of notices, a lot of work has gone into it. So fortunately, I think the figure was 14 cases maybe came to our office last year. There are ways to recover the money for that, but you'll never be made whole, right? And that's the bottom line, is that code enforcement will never be a break-even enterprise, unfortunately. Because I, because we get fees paid at the court level, so I don't know how many we had. Do we have 100 or so touch and goes? We had 100 or so. Lawn is, by the way, lawn mowing is a little different. You can put that right on the taxes with very little administrative effort because there's a statute that allows you to do that. But otherwise, all those other things, those checks, the noise complaints, the junk and debris, there's no money being generated from those. And so that's the tough thing that we've got to handle. So in some ways, the process is, and by the way, Davison Township did an excellent job. Grand Lake Township does a very good job with what they have. And I want to make sure that we understand that Stephen, Amy, and Jeff and his department do a really good job. And now we've added Jeremy's expertise, too. So it'll be interesting to see how we can get more out of what we have. And I think you'll find that we will.
No, in no way is this meant to degrade any work that we've been doing. I think we, you know, since we brought Mr. Lima to on several years ago, we actually have a full-time person now working on code enforcement, one and a half people, and it's in no way to degrade the work that's being done. Just, I think our board wants to see more of it. I think, you know, part of it, it might be that we have, you know, people moving to our community that may be coming from areas that don't have as high a standards as what we've had, and may not understand that some of the things that may have been acceptable in those communities, and we don't find those acceptable. And so it's letting them know that, an education process, but also may take a visit or a ticket or what have you to let them know that we're serious about this, this isn't something that's going to pass under our feet. But the other thing, too, I think that we're contending with, and I know there's been some cases that you've gone to court with, David, that, or Mr. Lima, Laddie, that, you know, the judges come back and said, that's really not blight. And I think, you know, we're in Genesee County, and there's a wide variety of standards of what's acceptable. And like you said, when you're dealing with, you know, murder and, you know, drunk driving, getting in an accident, whatever, and then you bring to them, you know, brush and debris and, well, you know, it's pretty low on the scale of, you know, what's an issue here in Genesee County. But I think, you know, most of the people that live in Grand Blank, I think anyways, that moved here, moved here because we have certain standards, or stay here because we've had certain standards. And I think that's what we're hearing when we're going door-to-door as far as what's a priority for them, besides more restaurants and more pathways, is, you know, they want to see standards maintained. But I think, Mr. Irda?
I just, so Jeff, when somebody complains, if they complain, they could remain anonymous. You'll still get back with them, correct?
Absolutely, 100%.
Okay. So because a lot of people might not, they might be hesitant to call, but if they just say, hey, we don't want you to, you know, contact us until...
And I think there are a lot of residents that probably see stuff and they don't want to complain in fear of their neighbor finding out it was them, or in not wanting a bad relationship.
And so you won't release that information?
Correct. They can give us just their phone number, we don't have to know anything else.
And to be honest with you, Mr. Irda, and I get people that call me that make a complaint, and I tell them, I'll put my name down and communicate with them. So I'll go and talk to Amy or Steve and tell them, hey, here's a property that we need to take a look at. But I'd prefer they fill out the form, because otherwise, I'm doing work that we should be directing to, and Mr. Lima has taught me that. Don't take on problems that aren't yours, you know, because then you own them. But anyways, there is a way to remain anonymous if that's an issue. Mr. White, I know you had some concern with code enforcement. Any thoughts that...
I guess my question would be, maybe you don't know, what percentage of the complaints are coming in via the online app versus people calling in? Because it seems easier to do online.
Right.
I mean, it seems 10 times easier.
I think the majority of people call in or send us the form, or will come in and fill out the form. I wouldn't say half probably don't fill out the online form, I don't.
Don't they have to send?
I don't have that statistic exactly.
It's not like an automatic thing, I don't believe, where they fill it out and hit send. I believe they have to...
No, there is, we do have a public service form on our website that you can fill out, there's fields on it, you can fill out and send. And it just, basically, it's a system that sends an email to our IT department, and then they dispatch the emails.
All right.
I don't get very many of those personally, but I also don't, you know, I'm not on the front lines doing ordinance enforcement, but I can get that statistic so that we know how that's utilized better.
It just seems like, I think that if more people knew that they could just do that versus having to call or go physically fill out a form, a lot would be a lot more, which may or may not be a good thing, but there would be a lot more complaints, I guess.
And we've discussed making it more accessible and more anonymous for people, to make it easier for them and more comfortable.
And I think you're right, Paul, Mr. White. I think, you know, people, you know, they're going for a walk in the evening, or they're on the weekend and they're seeing stuff, but during the week, you know, nine to five, they're at work or what have you, and they don't see, and they don't think of, you know, doing it at that time, but when we're open, so. Any other questions or concerns regarding code enforcement?
Only that, you know, Jeremy was saying how Davison Township charges so much more, maybe we should raise our rates a little bit, you know? Maybe bring a little bit more money. I know that's Dennis's purview, but something to think about.
If we can justify it, I would highly recommend that because you then eliminate those repeat offenders. If it's higher than them to pay a company to come out and do it every two weeks, then they'll do it themselves.
As part of the annual budget review process, we do look through the fee schedule. Every department had reviews the fee schedule and proposes new fees if they're appropriate for the following year. And when the board adopts the budget and works through there, you will see that fee schedule come to you with your annual budget worksheets.
Thank you. So one of the things that, for the public, the board is working on putting together some priorities for the next year. And one of the things that we've noted is that code enforcement was one of the priorities we wanted to look at. So we'll be revisiting this issue and probably looking at what the fee structure is or fine structure, and whether we're proactive or what have you, or if we need more staff, that'll be Dennis's call, but or Mr. Lima's call, so. Okay, thank you very much. And again, pass on our thanks to Mr. Hatfield, Ms. Wilkinson, and to you gentlemen for your hard work, and Mr. Laddie as well for taking these cases to court.
Chief Burdatt, we're going to get a report on the fire department, and this is their year-end annual report. Put together a very nice presentation with a real nice cover. I don't know if we can get a picture of that at all, but have to...
I'm sure we can put it on a webpage later.
Happy of it, so we can stick it in there, but.
All right. Well, good evening, and thank you for allowing me a few moments of your time to just explain to you about the fire department and what we did last year for our community. If you had your report in front of you, if you just go, I'm just starting off at page number four that we have here, and this is just our government. This is actually the second year that the fire department is operating under the full guidance of the board. Before, we were operating under the guidance of the Fire Commission because we serviced the city and the township. So now we are just servicing the township only. And unfortunately, last year, I didn't have enough time to really work on a report, so we got it done this year. But just to give you an idea of what the fire department does, we have a agreement through the state of Michigan for the Michigan MABUS reporting system or responding system that covers the entire state of Michigan, but we primarily stay within Genesee County. So it gives you an idea here that we supply mutual aid to 25 different municipalities within Genesee County covering over 315,000 residents. Numerous times, we're called to Burton, Atlas, Monday Township, Grand Lake City to assist in any time they need additional manpower or specialized equipment that we might have. So as we go through this, the entire structure of the fire department, you have the chief, you have my administrative assistant, Megan Delano, AKA Gilman, our deputy chief, our battalion chief, we have two station captains, one for station number one and one for station number two. This is station one here. Station number two is off Baldwin Road. We have two lieutenants at this present time, one fire marshal who's a lieutenant, and we operate with 33 firefighters. So as we go on through here, in 2020, we responded to 660 incidents throughout the community, 12% of those being actual fires. So that could be a structure fire, it could be a car fire, it could be a simple grass fire, but they're considered fires according to the National Fire Reporting System. 7% of those were rescue or emergency medical calls, 18% hazardous conditions, 21% are service calls, 20% good intent, an alarm that we were canceled on, or 22% of the alarm malfunctions. So a majority of our time is spent not really fighting fires, but answering calls of, my smoke alarm's going off, I don't know why, I don't see any smoke. I have a CO alarm that's going off, I don't smell anything, well, that's not a good sign because CO has no smell to it, so get out of the house. Those are the calls that we responded to over the last year. Just brief review on these calls. Unfortunately, last year, we did have one non-fire-related fatality. The individual was in the basement of a residence, that's where he rented an apartment. He was trapped by the fire because there was only one exit out, and the fire was next to that exit. He couldn't get out. So unfortunately, he passed away. But as we go on, on February 20th, we had a fire on Cold Spring Trail that engulfed not only the garage, the majority portion of the home, a travel trailer that was outside. I believe it also damaged the house next door. Again, this is similar to a fire that we had this year on McCannish Road where they had multiple propane tanks inside the, in the structure, gas canisters, vehicles, and it was just loaded with a bunch of fuel that'll burn and keep going for us.
Chief, that first one, you said it was a fatality, was that, you said that was a rental property?
No, it was not a rental property. It was a residence. It was a home. The lower level was occupied by an individual who was not part of the family.
But it wasn't a rental?
I don't believe it was rented, no. It was just given to the person to live in. Then as we go on, we did have a fire in a mobile home. This fire was kind of interesting because we received the call and we were on scene within three minutes, and in that three minutes, the entire trailer was gone. We could not see anything, but fortunately, everyone had exited the trailer and no one was injured. A loss of power at a manufacturing plant caused a cooling pool to overheat, which caused a fire on the roof. We received assistance from numerous departments on that fire. Fire was extinguished relatively quickly, but it's just where the location was, and luckily, we had some ladder trucks that could handle that. And frequently, we are called on a regular basis to respond to carbon monoxide calls. A lot of people don't realize how dangerous the carbon monoxide is. To give you an idea in this, a couple of these calls that we responded to, the actual residents that we had to call in, we did not detect any CO. However, when we checked the furnace in an apartment complex, multiple apartments, it was a furnace that belonged to another apartment. Or the ventilation system actually drew the gas into another area of the building, and that's how we found it. But overall, in 2020, we had 91% save rate of property value, or, yeah, save rate. As we go on through here, fire departments always rely on neighboring departments to help out. We are very lucky and fortunate to have multiple pieces of equipment, well-staffed department that are able to help out other neighboring departments that are having some struggles. So in 2020, we responded to 10 mutual aid calls, and we received three. So dramatic difference there. Yes?
Chief, any idea what percent, we're responding to, you know, what municipalities? Is there anyone in particular that you say we had, how many that we responded to?
We responded 10.
10?
Right. I'll be honest with you, Supervisor Bennett, I do not have that figure with me, but I can't get it.
But I mean, is it, do you know, is it particular one municipality, or it's a variety?
Burton Fire Department requests our assistance often, but it may, their request is more for, it was a particular piece of equipment. They now have that equipment in their arsenal, so they don't contact us that much anymore. This, last couple of years, we started into a new reporting program that allows us to break the community into zones. So we've taken Grand Lake Township and changed it into different zones, northwest, northeast, southeast, southwest, pretty simple. But with this information, it allows us to plot for future use of land for possible fire stations, can pinpoint areas where having high issues or high concerns, high incident rate. So it's just something new, it's a good tool for us. As you go through on page number 10, I actually have that broken down. So for an example, when we talk about the northeast, which is east of Saginaw, north of Perry, 217 incidents. In the northwest, I'm sorry, that was 217 in the northwest. In the northeast, we had 170. So the area that we're in right now is one of the higher areas.
Is that due to the age of the homes, chief, or what?
A lot of it is due to the age of the homes, sure, and the populace that's in this area. It's a little more populous than other parts of our areas. Okay? The next section of the response times, one of the major concerns was when we left the city area and they started their own fire department, is that we operated out of this station here and that we could hit all the areas in our community within our target goal of seven minutes for emergency response. So I want to emphasize emergency response. We hit that easily. We had a time study done, and we were well within the seven minutes. The only area that was any of a concern was further out east, but that's primarily farmland right now. So in the future, that might be something we look at. So at the bottom here, the response times, I have it highlighted here because this is emergency and non-emergency. We have an average response of seven minutes and 27 seconds. That includes the time that it takes for the firefighters, what I call reaction time, when the call comes in, to the time they get on the truck, and he gets out on the road and arrives at scene.
Is that the standard method, or is it...
There's a lot of different ways you could look at it. The...
It moves the entire call.
Yeah, I mean, if you were to break it all down, you take it from the time the call is received by central dispatch to the time it goes back to the actual dispatcher, to the time it takes from the dispatcher to press the button to make the announcement for the fire department, then you have the reaction time, and then you have the actual response time or travel time. And that's all considered response time. And it could be whether it's an actual piece of equipment that could mitigate the scene, such as a pumper, ladder truck. Ours, that's how I figure ours. I do not use the first arriving piece of fire equipment, which could be a chief's car. I don't use that, I use the actual apparatus. Well, you know, everybody has it on their mind, last year, we had the pandemic, while it's still going... Last year, we had the pandemic, while it's still going on, I'm sorry. I'm happy to say we had no exposures related to on-the-job duty. We were very lucky there. Of course, we all experienced it, but we didn't have that. But out of the dark cloud, there's always a silver lining. One thing that we did find, we started staffing our number-two station over off Baldwin Road to give the social distancing for the firefighters. So we have two down at our number-two station, two here at our number-one station, 16 hours a day, Monday through Sunday. And then after midnight to 8:00 AM, we staff three down here at this station. We have an on-call officer responding. We're looking into making some changes so that we could staff that station 24 hours a day because out of this, we found that our response time to emergency calls decreased by one minute, whether it's in the south or in the north end. So it's a dramatic change, and it's something that we really need to...
Can you say that again?
By one minute.
Yes, but what was it that precipitated the reduction in response time? Presence of folk?
Presence of staff at both stations.
At both stations?
At both stations, yes. Okay?
Chief?
Yes?
So taking one minute off that response time, a fire doubles in size every...
Thirty seconds.
Every 30 seconds.
The one minute is very significant if it's a fire in your home.
All right. You know, the one other thing I'll point out is that those homes in the southern area are a lot newer, and the building materials used today have a lot of glues in them. A structural collapse can occur within four to five minutes from a fire starting. So a structural collapse is just the building's starting to fall apart. So that's how fast they go. So firefighters are responding, if we can decrease that response time, we can help improve the safety of the resident, maybe do a viable or a rescue of a viable victim. When we take a look at the response times of the days of the week, a lot of people feel the weekends are really high numbers. They're not. Our busiest day of the week from, in 2020, was Wednesday. And you take a look at what time of the day it occurs, 5:00 PM is the, what I'll call the witching hour, because we responded to 68 calls at 5:00 PM, where other times were maybe 1:00, 2:00, 10:00, 20:00. I think the next highest was around 4:00 in the afternoon. So it gives you an idea, around 5:00 on Wednesday, don't be in town. So, okay?
Don't be busy.
Yeah, be busy. We have a fire marshal who performs fire inspections. This last year, when COVID started, we weren't allowed into a lot of the businesses, and that's fine, but we were able to complete over 154 general inspections this past year. New constructions, plan reviews are part of this person's job. So anytime a new commercial structure comes into the area, we get the plans to review it for fire suppression, site planning to make sure our trucks can turn around in the parking lots, roads coming in, you know, our trucks have to get there, so narrow roads don't work. So he does a lot of plan review.
Chief, how does, in terms of the inspections for businesses, do we try to hit those every year, or how does, what's our schedule for getting around every business?
Depending upon the type of business, we try to do our high hazard, high occupancies every single year. So that would be funeral homes, movie theaters, restaurants, those are considered high hazard. As we move down the chain, it could be two to, about every three years is the most that we wait, okay? We handle complaints from residents, and we address those complaints as soon as possible. They're normally within about 24 hours that we're calling and finding out what's going on. A lot of those are blocked exits, restricted exits. It could be a fire hydrant that's, you know, blocked by bushes, or a Fire Department connection that's blocked, that you can't see from the roadway. So we'll handle those complaints a lot. And of course, we also help install child safety seats. As we go on through here, there's a few other things. Yes?
So on the child safety seats, it says by appointment only, but if your guy is there and somebody is just driving by, would you guys look at their...
We'd help them out, obviously, but child safety seats are very, you learn how to put them in, you have to be certified to install them.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, if your certified guy was there...
Oh, sure, yes. Yeah, we'd help him and install it for him, yes.
Actually, I was here the other day in the parking lot, somebody pulled up.
Oh, did they?
And I had to direct them, they weren't sure where to go for the Fire Department.
Oh, okay.
I know we have some new signage coming, but I said, you actually drove right past it and directed them to where they need to go.
Yes.
So they were going over there, and that was earlier this week.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Next Friday.
Okay. So as we go on through here, we also install smoke alarms and CO alarms. Clerk Robertson was the beneficiary of that this year.
Thank you very much, you did a fine job.
Thank you. Did you ever find where that one came from?
No.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, Mrs. Robertson is very active on purchasing things online.
Oh, all right.
Maybe...
It just showed up, so that's fine. The key thing is, we, you know, we partner with the American Red Cross. They give us smoke alarms to install into people's homes or residents' homes. The only caveat to that is that we have to install them. They ask us to, just to hand them out is one thing, but they really want us to install them. The other part is a program through the state of Michigan called My Prevention. If you have a smoke alarm, you want to have it installed, all you have to do is fill out a form on there, and they will get in contact with us, and we'll call you, and we'll go out and install it for you. Pretty simple. So we did 212 this last year. We also obtained a large amount through CDBG money, and so 211 smoke alarms, 66 carbon monoxide detectors. Not a bad number. Community events are really big for the Fire Department. Everybody loves to see the trucks coming around and see the firefighters. So, you know, obviously with COVID, we couldn't do too much this past year, especially with the schools. That's our biggest time during fire prevention, day or week, whatever you want to call it. But, so this year, I tasked the fire marshal and our administrative assistant with the task of how do we get this message out? They were very inventive, and what we did were five separate short Facebook posts on fire safety. And it was just, it was well-received, and they did a great job. Also with that, you know, we take part in, when we first started off the COVID, we did the reading events with the Police Department. The other thing that we also do every year, we help out local charities such as Salvation Army with the Ringing of the Bell, and fish collection, fish food collection, which we're doing this weekend.
Does it have a friendly competition with the police on that salvation?
I was afraid you were going to bring that up, yeah. So we'll go back in time when we first started. The Fire Department exceeded the Police Department's figure in collection that year, I believe it was, first year?
True.
Yeah, true. The next year, we lost by $20, and I admit, I was the one who put the $20 into their kettle. And then this last year, it was $11.
So you've lost two out of three years?
Really, it's not enough?
No.
Right, okay, oh, okay.
It's a friendly competition. But they didn't call our, kind of, yeah, anyway, I'll stop right there. All right. The one other thing, the Fire Department is very proud of the fact is that we hold training in a high priority. When we started in the COVID this year, again, another challenge came about. How do we do our training with our hands on? Also do a lecture training when we can't gather in large groups. We made a lot of changes, and one of the programs we purchased this year was called Target Solutions that offers thousands of videos to firefighters to review how to do special events such as forcible entry, maybe a vehicle extrication or fire inspections, something like that. So we purchased that this year. Next one is, we have just, you know, pictures of our inventory. One of our newest trucks that came in in 2019 was the Sutcliffe Ladder Truck. This is our primary truck that we respond out of here with. The Board at the time was very gracious in allowing us to purchase that vehicle for the, and it was purchased for the very reason of the high roofs that we have to get onto, the peaks that ground ladders make it very difficult to get to. So this truck allows us to do that, get up on those roofs. The last portion of it is just our staff. It goes through, we had a retirement this last year, Captain Nauf retired, but with his departure, we brought on five new firefighters, and we welcome them in. And the last one is the last page. Page 21 is the entire listing of all the staff, their years of experience. If you add it up all the years of experience that we have there, you have 413 years of firefighting experience, something to be proud of.
Yeah, very. The, on the equipment side, I did, the chance to witness it being used, actually had a fire on McCannish, I believe it was a total loss, but...
Oh, yes.
The, I couldn't believe the force of the water coming out of the end of that hose on the, on the top of that ladder. And that ladder came in very helpful because it was a very high roof.
Yes.
And trying to get to the fire, that was about the only way, but the pressure that that came out with, I couldn't tell until they moved the ladder and the water started hitting the ground.
Oh.
And the force that it hit the ground with is just incredible. But I think, you know, we owe you guys a debt of gratitude for the transition that you made between moving here from the city, you know, did it seamlessly. And I know it was, you know, Mr. Limita and the staff here, Mr. Sears, helped with the renovation, what have you, but I know, you know...
They had the difficult part, mine was easy, let's just drive the trucks down the road, that's all we had to do, but...
Yeah. But in terms of...
Appreciate that.
Facilities, maybe you can comment, while we made the facilities accommodating for the Fire Department here in the building, I know there's some things that are lacking. Any comment on that?
Well, sure. Coming down to this station, you have to realize that Grand Lake was an on-call department for so many years, meaning there was nobody there at the station. We staffed the stations 10 years ago, and moving the staff down here offered some challenges. We made room the best we could, what we had in the fire station, we created sleeping quarters, but it doesn't meet the standards of today's in fire station environment. Individual sleeping rooms are common, contamination areas for cleaning equipment, cleaning clothing because of the carcinogens that firefighters are exposed to when fighting fires, they have to get that off as quickly as possible. And once you get back to the station, shower and have your equipment, clothing cleaned. Repair areas, storage areas, it's all limited, but we, you know, we understand in that, we understand that this was presented to us on a temporary basis at now until we got to the point where we could build a new station. So now is a golden opportunity for us, and we really appreciate the Board listening and yesterday during our strategic plan about the looking at doing a DPS and fire station combination.
Now, the potential for carcinogens, I mean, one just has to walk back in our garage here where our mechanics work to smell, smells like a campfire basically at any given day just because the smoke emanating from the, you know, gear that you guys hang up in the garage...
Yeah.
Try and air out, but breathing that, I know, we've mentioned a number of times that firefighters have a higher incidence of lung cancer probably because of that department, but...
There's a multitude of cancer that's related to firefighting, unfortunately.
Yeah. Clerk Robertson?
Just a quick question. Is, is our, is it ISO, is the sort of, the ISO rating, is it uniform across the entire township in terms of...
Oh, what our rating is?
Yes, the rating.
Yes, we have an ISO rating of 4/4Y, which is a very good rating. There are some insurances that don't really recognize that, they look at it more of, how far are you from a station, from a fire station? We received a call this afternoon, someone who lives off Baldwin Road is facing a rate insurance increase because that station's not staffed 24 hours a day. Although the trucks respond 24 hours a day, it's just we do not have someone there after midnight, so...
Our ISO rate has improved over time as well.
It's steadily improved every single time, yes. We originally started with a seven, we went to a five, and now we're at a four.
Okay, so we're making, what would it take to get us to a three, and what would that mean for, or some lower figure?
That's a very good question. I, you know, what it boils down to is documentation of training, there's a whole gambit of things such as the water supply that figures in with this. So there isn't really one thing, but if we had one thing to really put our hat on to would be the training and prove the documentation of the training for the firefighters. And as far as the dollar value of savings, I don't have that information.
There are some limitations in that, we have areas that don't have municipal water.
Yes.
Without having fire hydrants in those areas, the rating isn't going to change, at least with regard to how water's factored in, but perhaps, like you said, training and equipment and...
Right.
Staffing both stations, 20/7, those things may make a difference, so...
Yes.
In terms of staffing, I know right now is a difficult time for recruitment. We've been doing okay in that area, though, it sounds like.
We have been luckily with the, using our paid-on-call, part-time firefighters, they're getting paid an hourly rate for staying here at the station. We're able to staff the station 24 hours a day, but there's a lot of communities in the area that are not able to staff the station, or they don't have that plan in place, so they still rely on the volunteer or the paid-on-call firefighters. And unfortunately, the time commitment that it takes to become a firefighter and be really proficient in it is very exhausting. So for an example, if you become a new firefighter, your training session for your certification is over 218 hours, and then on top of that, that's just basic operations. You have driver's training, you have advanced vehicle extrication classes, there's a whole gambit of courses that you can take, it just takes up a lot of time.
One last question from me. What determines staffing level? Right now, we have five full-time. Is there anything that...
Not right off the top of my head, it's being financial.
Okay, so there's nothing objective that...
No, no, there's not, there's not really like a number of firefighters per residence that I'm aware of. Okay?
All right. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Please send our thanks to our firefighters.
I will.
I didn't catch those comments, but I can only imagine, but now with the Board, we'll hear from Chief Wiles regarding the annual report for Police Department.
Well, good evening, and certainly thank you. Obviously, 2020 was a tough year for everybody, and that certainly stands through for the law enforcement community and then the Grand Lake Township Police Department. We had several things to overcome, and I'm certainly proud of my staff. They are second to none. It's a special organization, and day in and day out, they come out and provide a superior level of service, so thank you to them. Thank you to the Board, Superintendent Limita, Attorney Laddie, Attorney Delzer. You make this job much easier when you have a supportive Board, a superintendent that's good to work for, and a township attorney that understands and works hard in the courtroom for us, so thank you. And lastly, certainly thank you to our community, where a lot of agencies are struggling to find that support. We have always had that here. It's a testament to the good work that the men and women of the Grand Lake Township do day in and day out, so thank you to the community for your ongoing support. It is truly noticed and appreciated. So if you didn't know, in 2020, COVID-19 was a big thing around, and it was a big thing for the Police Department as well. We had to change the way we policed for about a year. You know, we are a community service-oriented department, we always have been, we always will be. It's hard to do that when you can't see people face-to-face, when you can't engage with your residents on a daily basis. We changed everything from work schedules for our staff, you know, we have a sworn staff of 42 sworn officers. If we have a COVID outbreak in the Police Department and they all can't come in because of quarantine or positive tests, I can't, can't provide service. So we went to extreme lengths to try to protect the safety of our officers and our community. Alternate schedules where they were on seven, off seven, disinfecting cars, start a shift, end a shift, I can't tell you how much disinfectant we went through during, during this period. Closing the lobby of the Police Department, we've never done that, but just to stop that walk-in traffic because you don't know what was going to come in, if that, if the virus was going to come in or not, just to name a few. And again, credit to the staff, there was a lot of changes. They took it all in stride and understood the bigger picture of why we're doing it, and then the overall level of service we were trying to maintain. You know, we never took complaints over the phone, but we did because we wanted to avoid that face-to-face contact with some people out in the field, so minor complaints, we even took over the phone for a little bit, just to try to reduce the chance of exposure. So just in a nutshell, lots of, lots of changes with COVID-19. A lot of those community engagement project, community engagement things we normally do, you know, national night out, coffee with a cop, camp, safety, all that stuff, we couldn't do it. So the birthday drive-bys were a popular thing, and I thank Bob and the Fire Department for their assistance with that. I tell you what, the community ate that up, they love that stuff. And finally, we had to put a halt to it, we said, we can't do it anymore, we got, we got to take calls for service out there. Yes, we were all over. We'd have, you know, the birthday drive-bys, they turned into retirement drive-bys, and, you know, 100-year-old birthday drive-bys. It wasn't just for the little kids anymore, so we had to put some restrictions in place there, but the community loved it and we enjoyed doing it. We relied on our social media to engage with our residents. I put out countless letters, not countless, but several letters to the community about explaining why we're doing things, how things may look a little different with the use of PPE and all that. to the community about explaining why we're doing things, how things may look a little different with the use of PPE and all that. The reading to the kids via social media was very popular. We had classrooms of people tune in and engage in that, so we had to adjust on the fly. But again, you know, it's always been the department's philosophy, you know, there's challenges, but we look for those opportunities to get better and to overcome those challenges and adapt, and that's what we, that's what we did in 2020. So we are guided by our core values. Integrity, fairness, respect, honesty, courage, and compassion. Six core values. If you walk into our Police Department, you see them proudly displayed in our rotunda area for everyone to see. That's what guides us, day in and day out, even through COVID, even through the other things that were going on in 2020. Again, can't speak highly enough about the staff for what they did day in and day out and adhering to those values and providing a superior level of service. The breakdown of the Police Department, we are at, currently at 42. At this report, at 2020, we're at 40 sworn officers. That's the Chief of Police, Captain, two lieutenants, six sergeants, three detectives, and the rest are patrol officers, working three eight-hour shifts, providing service 24/7. Also have five full-time radio operators slash clerks and seven part-time radio operators slash clerks. I have an administrative assistant that works for me and we have a property room technician that is full-time, that is responsible for all our evidence downstairs and processing that and making sure it gets to the lab in a timely manner. Most of you may know, but one of the things that sets this Police Department apart from the vast majority of Police Departments across the state of Michigan is in 2018, we became the 19th accredited Police Department in the state of Michigan. We were the first municipal Police Department in Genesee County to reach accreditation. It's a significant professional accomplishment. It was guided by our two accreditation managers, Sherry Potter and Lieutenant Bill Rennie, although it's a team effort and everyone takes a part and great pride in this accomplishment. It is the voluntary compliance of 108 standards, best practice standards in law enforcement, set up through the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission through the Michigan Association Chiefs of Police. We are due for re-accreditation next year, which means we will have three assessors come to our department and make sure we are still complying with those standards. And we will have to prove to them that we are through a series of proofs. While there's 108 standards, there's many more proofs that are required. Each of those standards has probably eight to 10 proofs that have to be supplied. So we're talking probably over 1,000 proofs to show that we are the premier law enforcement agency that we say we are and that we comply with the accreditation standards for the state of Michigan. So very proud of them and that accomplishment. So in 2020, as you can imagine, with, especially with COVID, calls for service were down. We were down approximately, somewhere 3,000 to 5,000 calls for service down. And it's not to say we weren't busy. We've had other things going on that we had to attend to. The calls for service were different, you know. We are not a, certainly a violent community. We're a very safe community. Property crime, crimes against persons and violent crime, they were down for the year and I'll get there in a little bit, but we saw a lot more domestic violence. We saw a lot more incapacitation calls. Those types of things that kept us busy. A lot of the, you know, larceny from vehicles or what may be considered those minor calls, we didn't see as much of. And that's the reason for those calls for service being down. Traffic enforcement, there's no secret. Grambling Township, one of the pillars of our policing philosophy is traffic safety. And it still is. We went through, what, three months in lockdown when the roads were almost bare because of executive orders and the COVID. So our traffic enforcement numbers are down, but I'm proud to say we didn't have any fatalities on our roadways. Last year in 2020, across the state of Michigan, the good news is traffic crashes were down about 24%. The bad news is traffic fatalities were up 7% across the state of Michigan and we had zero traffic fatalities here in the township. Again, a credit to the officers out there on the road, making sure our roadways are safe. You will see in there a breakdown of crimes, crimes against persons and crimes against property. In 2020, crimes against persons, we had 275 reported cases, crimes against persons. That is a reduction from 2019 from 333, so you'll see crimes against persons is down from last year. I'm on page 19. And if you flip over to page 20, it talks about crimes against property. Again, crimes against property were down in the township last year from 707 cases in 2019 to 633 in 2020. A significant drop in crimes against persons, so all in all, crime is down in Grambling Township, crimes against persons, crimes against property, and crashes are down in Grambling Township. All very good things trending in the right direction. One of the most frequently asked questions I got last year, besides talking about policies and what our policies say and what they do and what they allow our officers to do and not allow them to do, is about use of force. It's a conversation that occurs across the country right now because of events that people have seen. In Grambling Township, you know, we made approximately 1,300 arrests last year. We had about 18,000 calls for service, about 3,000 traffic stops and countless other just contacts with residents. Out of all those contacts, we had 25 uses of force, which is an extremely low number. It's less than 2% of those. In all those cases, they were very low levels of control. The vast majority of those were subjects trying to actively evade or escape arrest by doing some action, whether it's pushing them away, whether it's, you know, striking the officer, trying to run from the officer, those low levels of resistance. Per accreditation, we have to do a meaningful review of every use of force. What that means is that it starts with the sergeant. They do, they review it to make sure it goes up to the captain. He does a review and then I get a form and I review the whole thing and I have to sign off on it to make sure that, one, no laws were broken, and two, that our policies were followed. In every case, all 25 cases, the appropriate level of control was used. And in many cases, a lower level of control was used than what would have been allowed by law in the state of Michigan. So we are well-trained in this area. Our policies are best practice policies through the accreditation. And we have two in-house instructors that yearly we recertify in defensive tactics. You know, de-escalation is a big thing. We have to be able to communicate with people. You know, de-escalation isn't a tactic, it's a result. And we strive to do that each and every time, whether it's with someone who is actively trying to assault an officer or whether it's someone who is under the influence of drugs or maybe has a mental illness. All those cases are important for the officer to be able to communicate with the subject to resolve that situation peacefully. So very proud of the way they handle their complaints, dealing with a wide variety of situations.
That's incredible, 2%.
Less than 2%. One of the new things that we started last year, and this was from input from our staff, this wasn't my idea. Sergeant Josh Ballinger and Officer Jarrell Webb, they came to me and said, "Chief, we want to give you a presentation." I said, "Okay, what do you got?" So we sat down, they did it and had a PowerPoint setup and everything. It was very well done. They said, "We want to start a bicycle unit," and they told me why. And a lot of what the reason why was the community engagement, you know, patrolling the trails here, the parks, all the special events that we go to. And so we did it. And those guys in the community, they just, they love this team. I know Supervisor Bennett's been out and riding with them a few times and you see firsthand the impact they have and the response they get from the residents out there. They do some very good work and it's a great tool.
Elaborate. How does the bicycle team operate?
So we have two of them right now and we have a rack for their cruisers, so they will put their bikes on their rack. And they're patrol officers during the shift. You know, they're assigned a district just like everybody else, racked with the community. Getting back to very basic community policing tactics, you know. And they've responded to calls on their bicycles. They've even actually made arrests on their bicycles. It's, they are a passionate group and they do a very good job.
I could just comment. I did have the opportunity to go out with them a few times last summer and the reaction from the public is amazing, that people who normally probably wouldn't approach police officers to talk with them. You know, they ride the bike and ride right up to residents in their front yard or at the park or what have you. But I was amazed at, it really eliminates some barriers for people to approach our police officers. And I just saw it as, wow, this is fabulous that it removes those barriers and really puts them on a friendly, you know, footing with our public.
As you know, we are a full-service Police Department. You know, the Patrol Division is the backbone of our agency. That's all our uniform personnel. But our Investigative Bureau, they are very busy and they do a really good job for us. As way of an example, they have a clearance rate of about 65%. That means that criminal cases that come into the department, they clear with an arrest about 65% of those. By contrast, you look around Genesee County, there is no one that does that. There are some agencies in single digits. Most are around that, probably 20 to 30 to maybe 40%, but no one touches 65%. It's a credit to the officers doing the investigations. It's a credit to the detectives doing the work and tight, you know, dotting the i's and crossing the t's. They're a small group, but boy, they do some really good work.
So that means, Chief, that if somebody breaks into a car or car stolen or what have you, what's the 65% represent with a case like that?
So any criminal complaint we have, like whether it's someone breaking into a vehicle, whether it's a home invasion, a shoplifter, whatever the case may be, all those criminal cases, we end up arresting somebody in 65% of those cases.
That's incredible.
That's a phenomenal number.
It's a huge number, yeah.
That is, that's incredible.
One change for 2020, you know, we have two school resource officers and they do a wonderful job in our schools, but our schools weren't in session for most of that year. So we did get the advantage of having them on the road, which helped with answering some of those calls and doing some of those patrol duties, so. I am proud to say, though, that this year we will be doing a couple of programs. We're scheduling them now, our Camp Safety, which is for youth, and our Citizens Police Academy. We were on the fence whether to try to do that last year and we chose not to on the sake of safety. I know Trusty Hugo's been through the Citizens Police Academy. We're proud of that program and we look forward to getting that back going this year, this October. National Night Out is another one, first Tuesday in August. We will, you'll see us doing that again this year. One of the things that helped this agency quite a bit through a very challenging 2020 was an organization called AllPact. AllPact is advocates and leaders for police and community trust. This group has been together for a long time. I'm proud to be the chairperson for that group for the last five years. And we meet monthly to discuss issues that affect police and community trust. It's a, it's a good cross-section of all of Genesee County. This isn't just a Grambling Township thing. We have law enforcement leaders from across the county and leaders of various community groups from across Genesee County and we meet and we talk about issues. When we started seeing some of the things across the country happening as far as protests, some of them turning violent, first thing I did is I reached out to AllPact and said, "Let's remember what we do." You know, talk with your circles about the work we're doing and the progress that we've made here in Genesee County. And in Genesee County, as far as I know, we did not have any, you know, violence during any of the protests in any of the jurisdictions across Genesee County. Certainly not the sole reason, but I truly believe it was part of the reason for that that did not happen. And one of the last things I'll touch on is training. You know, after use of force, training's the next question I get usually from residents about what do we train on, what do we do? Training's one of the pillars of professionalism and nowhere is that more important than in the law enforcement profession. We do a lot of training. It is important to us. We've always done a lot of training. We try to focus on a few areas. We do, we do some things yearly, defensive tactics, first aid CPR is done every two years. But we also, every member of this Police Department has been through fair and impartial policing or implicit bias training. We focus on supervision and leadership classes and training to develop that next, that next generation of leader here, leader within the Police Department. Mental health first aid is a program. Not only does it help the officers determine when they may be feeling the effects of some of the stresses of the job, but helps them deal with people in the community that may be going through a mental health crisis, looking for those signs and symptoms so they can properly interact with that person. And of course, emergency vehicle operations. We drive a lot of miles. You know, our officers are in a patrol car eight hours a day and they do a lot of driving. I'm proud to say I am aware of one accident that occurred last year and we were not at fault in that accident. So. We strive to develop in-house instructors in several disciplines. On page 56 is a list of those. I won't go through them all. But everything from defensive tactics, ALIS, which is the program using the school for active shooters, first aid trainers, K-9 trainers, we all have in-house instructors that are highly respected that take care of that. We did have a few personal achievements in what was a tough last year. An achievement that will not be met for many, many years here, if not in this county for many, many years, is Officer Wes Evans made his 1,000th OWI or impaired driving arrest. That's a lot. There's no one in Genesee County that's done that and he did it in 17 years. And if you know Wes, you know he is passionate about impaired driving. He is a national leader on the subject. He's an expert witness in several courses. He has taught literally close to 5,000 police officers in various aspects of detecting impaired drivers, so kudos to him. He is, he's just the best. He's just the best at that. And we did get a chance to hire a few officers last year and we're still on that, on that track this year. Officer Bailey Dunn, Officer Destiny Methner, and Officer Jack Pyle are all the new hires that we hired last year in 2020. And in the next month or so, we will bring all those new hires in here so you guys can get a chance to be introduced to them and meet them and they can meet you as well, so we look forward to that. And that is all I have for you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I do have one quick question.
Go ahead, Kirk. Go ahead.
I noticed on page 45, there's a picture, something about our Red Kettle Competition Trophy.
Yes, yes.
Just throwing that out there. I just. See, it's the police. They have it, that's all.
Chief, who was really the big winner of that Red Kettle Competition? Didn't you guys raise more money in a single day than any other?
Yes. The Salvation Army and Genesee County are the big winners there. They, I don't know what she would do if we didn't participate in this, you know, they, we.
She does every year.
Yeah, and again, it's a credit to the support that the police and the Fire Department have from their residents here. We stand out in front of Walmart and people just come in droves and donate money and it's just amazing to see and be part of.
It's a fun event.
Yeah.
Turk Robertson?
Yeah, in a previous life, I represented the community of Waterford Township.
Yes.
And they had a charity event that was a friendly rivalry between the Police Department and the Fire Department that was billed as guns and hoses.
Yes.
A takeoff on the rock band, I guess. And, but they would have a hockey game, I think was what it was. Now, I don't know, can you guys skate or?
So in Genesee, in Genesee County, there is a hockey contest between Police and Fire.
Is there really?
County-wide event.
Okay.
And I don't skate, but I'm proud to say I do know that the Police Department wins more often than they lose.
Well, we want to keep that friendly rivalry going and all for charity and all in good funds, so. When I first started running for the job and when I, this job, and when I got elected, I asked Mr. Limata and yourself three questions. I said, as it relates to the Police Department, are they, are they well-paid? Are you well-provisioned and are you well-trained? You've answered those questions this evening. Is there, is there, is there an area of concern that you, as great as things are, and they are very good here, is there an area of concern that you have in terms of, in terms of training, in terms of, in terms of your world, if you will?
No, as far as training, no. I mean, we are doing a very good job there.
You can always do, you can always do more, you know.
And, and you know, that's, it's been a mantraless department, you know, continuous improvement. Every day is a training day. How do we get better each and every day? And, you know, we do that through training, you know, even the roll calls, which are the mini meetings, if you will, before the officers go out on their shift. The sergeants run that roll call and they provide 10, 15 minutes of training. Could be on a policy, could be on a recent event, could be on anything, just to give information, you know, generate some thought, have some discussion and answer any questions that may be out there. If you're asking for one area that we need to pay attention to, it's our recruitment and retention. And it's not a Grambling Township issue. This is a law enforcement issue across the country, finding good men and women who want to be police officers. It is very challenging right now. As you know, right now I'm approved. As you know, right now, I'm approved for 45 sworn officers, I'm at 42. We have been trying very, for a very long time and very hard to get up to that 45 number, it has just been very challenging, very challenging.
And I'll comment that, you know, the caliber of people that the Grand Bling Township Police Department hires is at the top of, you know, the standards are very high, and everybody that I've met and even sworn in in the past several years as supervisor, I can say are top-notch, and you guys do a fabulous job with your recruitment, and for the standards that we have, it's even tougher to find good people, but I know you guys will keep working at it.
We will.
We'll even take them from other departments if they're interested.
We've had some reach out, so.
Any questions for Chief? Yes, Mr. Hugo.
I don't have any questions, I just wanted to comment that, as you indicated, I did participate in the Citizens Police Academy, and I've also taken part in the ALICE training many times, working in this school district, and you and your officers do a great job.
Thank you.
I'm getting a message that everybody needs to speak into their microphones.
Mine's off.
No problem. Is it off?
Yep.
Okay, need to point it towards the public.
Do you want me to say it again?
Sure. Go ahead, Sarah.
I just wanted to say again, I participated in the Citizens Police Academy as well as ALICE training several times, working in the school district, and you and your officers do a great job, so thank you.
Any other?
I do want to just make one comment, because I've known Wes, now, this is serious, so I've known Wes for a long time, and he is one of the most honest and ethical people.
Absolutely.
And he is very good at his job, and we've always appreciated him.
Yes.
So, one final word on Wes, again, from a previous life. Wes was instrumental in, he actually approached me about changes in state statute during my time in the Senate with regard to marijuana, and how we measure amounts in the bloodstream and so on, gave me a dissertation on the whole subject. That led to the passage of legislation that was signed by Governor Snyder and received bipartisan support in the House and Senate, and we, he came to Lansing for the bill signing ceremony, as did your predecessor. And so, he really is recognized as a national leader on this. I learned a lot about non-alcohol intoxication, was somewhat eye-opening, and, but he's really, he knows his stuff, that's for sure, he knows his business very well. And actually, I just heard from him a week or so ago, in a similar vein, concerned again about matters before the legislature and offering his expertise. So, kudos to Wes.
So, just to wrap it up, I, to both chiefs, you know, we don't ever want to take for granted the work, you know, we have been spoiled a little bit here in Grand Bling Township because we have such superior departments, and we just want to let you know, we don't take that for granted, and we shouldn't take it for granted, because it doesn't happen just by, you know, mistake. It's a serious effort by committed individuals like yourselves that keep us out of the newspaper, so to speak, and keep crime rates low. Our firefighters are staying safe, and our equipment, our schedule for replacement, all those things factor into having great departments, so just to let you know, we don't take that lightly, the work that you do to make sure that we have such top-notch departments, so thank you to both of you, okay?
Thank you.
So.
Okay, and now, item D, the board will consider a motion to approve the purchase of Airhawk Air Purification System from Clean Air Concepts of Cincinnati, Ohio, with installation at Fire Station Number Two at 3313 East Baldwin Road for $24,766. Unauthorized Township Superintendent execute all related agreements and documents.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay, supported by Mr. Fike.
Record roll call, Trusty Hugo.
Yes.
Trusty Fike.
Yes.
Trusty Raridan.
Yes.
Trusty White.
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Myself, yes, Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Seven-nothing, motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Item E, the board will consider a motion to approve the purchase, or approve the agreement with Row PCS, the Township Engineer, for the Sherwood Drain Bridge Replacement Design Engineering Proposal for the sum of no greater than $19,500, and authorize the Township Superintendent to execute all related agreements and documents.
I've got, is that off McCandless Road?
We have our, we happen to have our Director of Parks and Rec, Mr. Lenihan, with us this evening, and Mr. Lenihan?
All right, so, in Bicentennial Park, we have a very elaborate trail system. A lot of people don't know about all the hiking trails that we have throughout the park, but on the northwest side of the park, past the soccer fields, in between the soccer fields and the highway, we have hiking trails out there, and the Sherwood Drain runs through there. We have a pedestrian bridge that runs through that section of the park, and during a recent inspection this spring, it was noted to be structurally deficient, and it has since been closed to the public for traffic because we don't want anything to happen. So, what this does is, this allows Row to do a survey of the area, to come up with a cost analysis on what the best way of replacement is, whether that be a culvert, whether it be a bridge, and present that to us. Past that, once we are given the choices, we'll make the decision. It could be something as easy as a culvert with guardrails that township staff can put in. That will reduce the cost of this agreement, because we won't have to go out for bidding and those services, so.
Thank you.
Answer the questions.
Is a motion in order, Mr. Supervisor?
Make the motion.
Okay, Ms. Hugo makes that motion.
Okay, very good, and I will support.
Supported by Mr. White.
Okay, well, very good.
Thank you, Mr. Lenihan.
Okay, Trusty Raridan.
Yes.
Trusty Hugo.
Yes.
Trusty White.
Yes.
Trusty Fike.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Seven-nothing, motion passes.
I wanted to say also, I failed to mention this during the two chiefs, our fire chief and our police chief's reports, that the reports are phenomenal, and I know the public doesn't have a copy of these, but the work that went into these reports is amazing, the numbers and the statistics and the narratives that you put together, I just want to let you know that these are phenomenal pieces of work that, you know, I wish the public could see them, but it really shows in details what work your departments are doing, so great job. Future agenda items, I know that the board will be looking at a number of projects coming up, we've got some water and sewer things that are going to take some time for us to consider at some meetings, we just want to pile on all at once. We have some things that we're going to be talking about with our strategic planning, so I think our agenda items, we aren't lacking any, but if there's anything in particular that anybody wants to make sure that we focus on, we mentioned at the last meeting that Mr. Limada has a schedule of the different departments that will be presenting to the board, just like Code Enforcement did this evening, we'll have other presentations from other departments, so we understand what they're doing and what they do for our residents, so give me a call if there's something that piques your interest, that you want us to present or have presented as an agenda item.
With board reports, Ms. Hugo, anything with planning?
So, we will not be having a meeting on June 3rd due to lack of an agenda. The next scheduled meeting is supposed to be July 1st, but because of the July 4th weekend, we are going to wait until July 8th to hold that meeting.
Mr. White, anything with the zoning board of appeals?
As far as I know, there's a meeting set for next Tuesday at 6:30.
Okay, very good, and I think, I don't know, did we report on the result of one of the, I guess the Planning Commission approved a discount tire moving into the township?
They did, and that actually was a combined effort of the ZBA took up the issue of the setback or the distance requirement, or variance between the special land use that's required for the discount tire and the residential area, and then, then within a week, it was in front of the Planning Commission, and they made, took further steps to make sure that the residents were offered, so it was, it was all in all, and the applicants did a good job, too, it was a good demonstration of effort and problem solving.
And it worked for the residents that will be living near it, they were in support of it, finalized?
Ultimately, yes. They were cautious, but they were optimistic.
Very good. I understand it's one of four, the design is only one of four in the U.S. that they're...
Yeah, it's almost all internal, it's kind of fascinating. It'll be interesting to see when it's built, I think it's going to be a nice building, and it'll be interesting.
Right, okay. Mr. Fike, anything on Metro Alliance to report on?
They meet tomorrow.
Okay, very good. Mr. Raridan, anything?
Chief already said it.
Okay. Mr. Kilmer, anything additionally to the report that we received from PFM?
I think we're pretty much up to date.
Okay, we'll have an investment committee meeting here shortly, within the next couple of weeks, my hope is.
Yeah.
Clerk Robertson?
Nothing new to report, sir.
Okay, Attorney Laddie?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Limada, I'm going to go last, so anything to report, Mr. Limada?
No?
No, thanks for, thanks for everybody's engagement yesterday in that strategic planning session, that meant a lot. I had a tremendous amount of feedback from the department heads about how much they appreciated the engagement and the direction from the board. Again, something we've been seeking and looking for, and to have you guys be that engaged, and to have the interaction that we had, and I look forward to seeing the plan that comes out of there as we move forward. So, sincerely, on behalf of the administrative staff, thank you for your engagement, thank you for your participation.
And I want to make sure the board remembered that we weren't supposed to worry about how we fund these ideas, right?
I'm not sure where that idea came from.
You guys remember hearing that at the meeting, "Don't worry about how we fund these ideas."
Talk about ideas, yeah.
I'd like to point out that is part of a visioning exercise, and, but no, it's your priorities, and when we hear your priorities, that's how we will approach the budget, so we take that very seriously, although I just want to point out, the pie hasn't gotten any larger.
Okay, so, Mr. Limada is working on a number of things, development and what have you, so some exciting stuff that we're working on, the, I have to ditto what Mr. Limada said with our workshop with, between our board and our department heads, really, and I know Mr. Laddie, you know, participates in a lot of board meetings with other municipalities, and I think he even mentioned that he hadn't seen something like this.
He didn't like that.
Yeah, so we really put our heads together as to what we want to achieve here in the township, and we've got to hone it down a little bit, get a little bit more specific with, and what departments have to look at, what some of the ideas were, but we'll be bringing it to the board and to the public to discuss and to vote on here next month, I would guess. So, really exciting stuff. One thing that I do need to ask the board, in order to change the Planning Commission meeting, I understand the board has to approve the change in the date, right now, they're scheduled to meet July 1st, that's a little bit of a problem with the 4th of July weekend, so we're asking the board if you would allow us to change the date to July 8th for that meeting.
Need a record roll call?
No, we can just do a voice vote, but we need a motion and a second.
I move.
Okay, motion by Treasurer Kilmer, supported by Trusty Fike. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move the meeting to July 8th.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, I'll accept that, support.
What time is that, Planning Commission?
What time are they, 7:00 PM.
Okay.
Okay, there's a motion to adjourn, supported by Hugo.
Motion by Raridan, supported by Hugo. Trusty Hugo.
Yes.
Fike.
Yes.
Trusty Raridan.
Yes.
Trusty White.
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer.
I just want to say, what happens if we say no? You got to stay here.
All we need is four votes, so.
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay, myself, yes, Supervisor Bennett, I presume, yes. We are adjourned at 9:26 PM.
Thank you, everyone.